Welcome to the Superintendent's Hangout where we discuss topics in education, charter schools, life in general, and not necessarily in that order. I'm your host, Dr. Shoretta. Come on in and hang out. This episode is brought to you by McGriff Insurance Services and Senior Vice President Mike Lutoski. For over a century, McGriff has focused on building long-term relationships to deliver innovative insurance solutions. The McGriff name dates back to 1886 and the founding of McGriff, Sables, and Williams. Today, McGriff is part of Truist Insurance Holdings, Inc., one of the top 10 largest insurance brokers in the world. McGriff provides highly consultative risk management and insurance solutions for businesses of all sizes, as well as for personal insurance needs. Coverages available include commercial property and casualty, small business, employee benefits, management liability, personal lines, and much more. Mike Lutoski's expertise is wide-ranging and includes transitioning employers from fully insured to partially self-funded medical, dental, and vision programs, HRA wrap programs, reference-based pricing, healthcare pricing transparency, pharmacy consulting, wellness programs, marketing implementation, and ongoing management of fully insured benefit plans, and much more. Mike can be reached on his cellphone at (619) 925-1731. All proceeds from this sponsorship support the Eric C. Mitchell Scholarship Fund at Albert Einstein Academies. The scholarship benefits graduates who exemplify the outstanding human qualities that define Mr. Mitchell's legacy. On this episode, I chatted with Maria Ortega. Maria is currently the President of the Albert Einstein Academy's Board of Trustees, has served in various capacities as a volunteer at Albert Einstein Academies for nearly 20 years, also serves as an elected board member in another charter school organization here in San Diego, is a Chief Compliance Officer for a scientific research organization, is a full-time mom, and is one of the busiest people I know. We had a wide-ranging conversation covering many, many topics, including who are her role models and inspiration in life, what it feels like to live in the US as an undocumented individual, which is part of Maria's origin story, and much, much more. I hope you enjoy listening as much as I did creating this episode and recording it with a colleague of mine for many, many years, Maria Ortega. Welcome, Maria. Good morning and thanks for coming on the Superintendent's Hangout. I was wondering if you could start out by telling us a little bit about yourself, what your origin story is, what your trajectory has been career-wise outside of education, as well as as a board member, and anything else you want to share?
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. I'm looking forward to this. I've been looking forward to this discussion, but I have been a little nervous about it, to be honest.
That's okay. Everybody says that, and then 15 minutes in, we're like old friends, so. Plus, you and I are old friends.
We are. We are old friends. I was trying to recall this morning how many years we've been working together, and I know that I think we started working together when I was pregnant with Gabrielle, and she is now an 18-year-old senior in high school getting ready to graduate.
That's right. It's, yeah, I think we're in our 18th year of working together, so it's pretty remarkable how we stayed the same age that whole time.
Well, my origin story, I'd not thought of that. I'd like to say that I'm currently the Chief Compliance Officer at La Jolla Institute for Immunology. It's a medical research institute up in La Jolla. I know that's redundant. You can skip that part. And I'm really proud of myself. I've joked with people, other brown people like me who know me, and I've told them, "Not too bad for a little brown girl from TJ." I was born in Tijuana and came to the US with my parents when I was two years old. We came over on a visa, and we overextended our visit into the US. So for a lot of years, it was really difficult because people don't understand how vulnerable children are who were brought over to the US.
Because it's not, first of all, it's not your choice. You're two years old.
Absolutely.
And papers are not, that's also not your choice.
Absolutely. And it's, it's difficult because there was a sense of always knowing, even from a very young age, and always being scared of who's going to find out. I never told anybody. And although I consider myself a lifelong Democrat, I am very thankful for Ronald Reagan because he did give us amnesty in 1987, and that's when my family and I became legal citizens or permanent residents here in the US. So that was a sort of anxiety that was lifted from a young 11, 12-year-old girl.
That's a big burden on anyone, but in particular, a child at that age. I'd imagine that it was almost like just this kind of cloud of uncertainty that hangs over you at every step of life, right? Are you going to be on a field trip that takes you to out of town, and you have to pass through a checkpoint? Or are your parents going to be driving and get in a traffic accident, and maybe someone asks them for their ID or?
It was, it was, it was scary, and it was something that you didn't talk about with anyone else. And I always excelled in school. I was always teacher's pet. Did really well in elementary school, in junior high, and high school. But it was something that in elementary school and junior high that you were really scared about, to the point where in junior high, I tried not to speak Spanish outside the home. And it wasn't until I found myself later on that I just became very proud of being able to speak two languages.
What did that do to your family? I mean, so you kept speaking Spanish at home?
Yes.
And then when you're out in public with your parents, you kind of have to switch to English if other people are around?
Well, it was interesting because for, for kids who come to the US and grow up here, a lot of times, we are translating documents, we are translating languages, we are-
Phone calls?
Phone calls. We are at a very early age, little translators who are not paid.
And are not always, yeah, capable of it, right?
Absolutely.
With complicated concept, if you go to the doctor. I'd imagine back in those days, there weren't bilingual staff at the doctor's office either.
No. But I've always been a very curious child, and as I've mentioned before, I did excel in a lot of areas. I could, it wasn't that difficult for me because I've always done it. And I think I've always been mature for my age. I think my first job was when I was 12 years old. My neighbor was a tax attorney, and he hired me. This is crazy to think about. He hired me to fill out people's tax forms.
Whoa, child labor alert.
I was at 12 years old putting together 1040s for people. Nobody knew, but I was a very responsible kid, and I would work from his garage on a typewriter and fill out forms for him at 12 years old.
How did they, so I'd imagine that when you went to school, the school didn't know your immigration status. It wasn't a required question for them to ask, and the same stands for today. But how did your school handle the fact that, you know, I'd imagine you're, you're an English language, well, you are an English language learner, and in those days, you'd only been in the, if you came across at age two, you're starting kindergarten, certainly not fully fluent in English. How did, what was your experience like in school back in the, well, you mentioned Reagan, so I'm, we're not, we're not that young anymore. How have things changed over the years?
So it's interesting because although my parents were very young teenage parents, they, they learned a lot, and so they saw the challenges that my older sister, who was two years older than me, had with being an English language learner. And so I started preschool before kindergarten. I was in Head Start, which is another great program that allows kids to get a head start in life and education. So I was in Head Start and learned enough English that I wasn't considered an English language learner when I started kindergarten. So I was never on that path, which I think is why it helped me as opposed to how the path was for my older sister. And so this was something that my parents were able to see the difference and make sure that it provided me an opportunity to not be stigmatized as an English language learner.
Interesting, and I, I think, and the real, the ideal state is a balance between the two, right? Where there's enough support and where you can be proud that you speak a language other than English at home, and also when your parents pick you up at school, but then to not have a kind of a quote-unquote "downgraded" experience at school, right? And I don't know how things were in the 80s, but I could imagine, I mean, we're still wrestling with, in California, meeting the needs of English language learners.
Absolutely.
I would say that there's still lots of misunderstanding, lots of disproportionate identification of English language learners as in special ed when they're really not. And we could go on and on just on this topic.
No, absolutely. And even now, I get curious comments from people who, they truly are curious. They say to me, once they learn that I wasn't born here in the US, they make comments like, "But you speak English so well." And I said, "Yes, I should. I've been here in this country for 47 years. Of course I speak English well."
So you just outed yourself age-wise?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting, or you get the question, "How did you come? Did you come in an airplane, or did you run through the mountains?"
Well, it was interesting because, that's also a funny story. My little sister, who was born here in the US, in her mind, she, we had watched that movie Born in East LA-
Oh, jeez.
-way back in the day, and she used to think that that's how we came across, that we came running across a mountain, and we said, "No, we're in a car with our visas."
We drove 10, 15 minutes.
We, we did come into the US legally. We just overstated our welcome.
Yeah, that's quite a story, and I appreciate you sharing that, and I think it, it deepens your work as an Einstein board member in terms of appreciation, appreciating the diversity in our community. So I was wondering if we could pivot from your origin story to, first, before we get to the board part, Chief Compliance Officer. So what's that?
Okay, so no one ever grows up to say, "I want to be in Sponsored Research Administration" or "a Chief Compliance Officer." So my route was interesting. I went to San Diego State right, right after college. I graduated from Temecula Valley High School back in 1992. Again, I'm dating myself. Went straight to San Diego State. And I was a commuter kid at the university because we did have limited funds, and I could not afford to stay at the dorms. So for the first semester, I commuted from Temecula to San Diego State, which was quite a drive. I then moved in to an apartment off-campus my second semester, and I had to work. I did not have an option to not work, so I worked first as a work-study student, and then I found myself another job, also in an office at the university, working for a sponsored research project. And I continued to go to school, and through the end of my education, I continued to work in Sponsored Research Administration, and I realized that I was really good at it. I was also a career path that I had never envisioned, and I continued to work my way through the system, working first on a project, the Language Acquisition Resource Center, which was a federally funded project from the Department of Education, to then working in the central office at San Diego State University Research Foundation, and then from there, moving over to Sanford-Burnham Prebiss, which is another medical research institute at La Jolla, working my way up to Director of Sponsored Research there. And then last year, I had a curious call from a headhunter who wanted to run by a few things for, she asked if I could provide some guidance for La Jolla Institute, who was hiring for a new position there. And I had done this with other organizations. One of the things that I pride myself in is giving back, and I have, over the years, provided guidance to younger generations. I've been a mentor. I always joke that I'm a mentor without meaning to be a mentor. I just become someone's mentor. And so I've freely given up my time over the years to provide guidance and leadership. And so when they called me to ask me about this new position, and if I could provide some guidance, I said, "Absolutely." So they asked me questions, and little did I know that the headhunter was actually trying to recruit me. And so I provided my experience, my guidance, what I thought the position should be. And at the end of the conversation, it was about an hour, hour and a half, she asked if I was interested in the position. And I said, "No, I'm very happy where I'm at. I am a creature of habit." I was at San Diego State for 16 years. I moved over to Sanford-Burnham. I'd been there for about 12 years, and I was fully prepared to retire there. And La Jolla Institute was very kind and persistent, and I moved over, and I am now their Chief Compliance Officer. Been there for just under a year. But I am working with some very great groups to develop some, I'm going to have my first presentation as a, in my new role at the ARI Institute, which is the Association of Independent Research Institutes. They have an annual meeting, and so I have a session that I'll be presenting in September, where I'm trying to put together federal sponsors, law enforcement, and independent research institutes to discuss what it means to conduct research in this day and age, and meeting the research security requirements that the government has implemented, and how those requirements have grown exponentially in the past five years. First, starting with the China Initiative, which the DOJ recently dropped and is now turned into research security, which encompasses all countries, not just China. We'll focus on China. So I'm really excited about that project, but I have a lot of work to do between now and September.
I'd imagine that you work, it must be fascinating, as you say, it's an area that most people don't think about before they get into it. And it's like, I've interviewed, I interviewed our insurance broker a couple of episodes ago, and it was a fascinating conversation, but at the front end, he's like, "No one ever says, 'I want to go into this.'" They kind of fall into it, and then they realize they're good at it, and they realize it's meaningful. The, I think about when I was getting my doctorate, the IRB Institutional Review Board, and what a labyrinth of restrictions and kind of a pain in the neck it was. I could imagine that what you're doing is, is that on steroids, involving state and federal governments and private institutions and lots of money, and not wanting researchers to run afoul of the law and making sure that the results are valid when it actually comes out, and I could only imagine.
Absolutely. And one of the things that I pride myself is in really developing a relationship with the researchers who I work with, and letting them know that I'm not here to police them, but that I am a partner and a collaborator with them in their research so that we can protect them and the organization.
It's, yeah, we could, we could, I want to make sure we get to your board service, but I'm fascinated by it. Maybe we'll have to do podcast episode 2.0. So let's transition to your volunteer governance and board service at Albert Einstein Academies. And I know you have, you serve on another board as well of another charter school. How did that come about? What was your transition like from parent to volunteer to fairly high-profile position as President of the Board of Trustees?
I think that we have, I've grown up as an, again, I think, as an immigrant. You grew up with a sense of giving back, working hard, and just being able to give back to the community. And I think for me, the different areas that I volunteer in is a way that I can give back. I started volunteering at Albert Einstein Academy when my oldest, who is going to be 25 this year, was in kindergarten. So this was back in, let's see, 2004, I believe, is when she was at Einstein, maybe? It was the second year of the school.
Yep, 2004.
And we were at the small church down the street off of College Avenue, and I started volunteering in the classrooms. We had never left her before. She had never gone to preschool. The first, we had never left her alone with strangers. She had never been babysat by anyone. She was always with either my parents, my sister, my husband, or me. And so dropping her off that first day was really tough. I was very lucky that she had wonderful teachers, Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Anderson back then.
They're both still with us.
Back then, she was Ms. Anderson. Now she's Mrs. Holt. But dropping her off that first week to English week with Mr. Hernandez was the first time we'd ever left her with somebody who was not our immediate family. And I stayed at the school that morning until lunchtime, just not ready to let go.
Helicopter parents in full force.
And then I realized, well, if I volunteer, I can be there more often. And so I can, I started volunteering in kindergarten, in the classroom, helping with projects and reading. And I never stopped. Back then, the school was a lot smaller. We didn't have a Board of Trustees. We had a school site council. So I was part of the school site council, then became the president of the school site council, and helped to, once we had developed the Board of Trustees, I helped with the process of seating the first members of the Board of Trustees. I went to every meeting of the board over the years, and after a few years of attending the board meetings, I thought to myself, "Let's go ahead and give this a shot." And so I applied for and was seated as a board member. By this time, I think both Genevieve and Gabrielle were at the school.
Yeah, because I remember Gabrielle was probably in kindergarten.
Yes, and Gabrielle was running around-
She was running around.
-at our board meetings.
At our board meetings. Calling me Mr. Spaghetti.
It was, I think it was Mr. Enchilada.
Oh, that's right. Mr. Enchilada, that's right.
She couldn't say Dr. Shoretta or Mr. Shoretta, so. I think she called you Mr. Enchilada.
There we go. So Gabrielle, when you hear this, thank you. I've been called way worse, so that's a very endearing name.
So I think working at a nonprofit, volunteering at the school, my husband working for the government, it's just a sense of, of who we are as a family, of giving back, and, and just having a sense of wanting to give back to the community.
And your husband deserves credit because I remember many, many meetings, especially in the early versions of the board where we were less disciplined and less organized, and we're going late into the night, and this is kind of pre-cell phones, so he didn't really have a way to text you and be like, "Are you coming home?" And I remember you going, "Oh, my husband, I love him. He's just, he's just picking up for my slack when I'm here." So he deserves that too. I think anybody who serves in a capacity and, and has a family and young kids, it's, it's a partnership too, right, for that? And I appreciate the, the giving back piece. I think the, we get to a certain stage in life too where it becomes, I think, more and more of an imperative to think about, "Okay, what advantages have I had? What advantages have I earned? But what advantages have I had through hard work that other doors open, like a headhunter calling you about a different person or setting up position? Before you know it, you've got a new job." That's just because you worked hard and distinguished yourself in that career, and that's why they called you in the first place. So hard work begets other opportunities, even if it's not a straight line there. And then the importance of giving back. I have a friend who is Buddhist, and he always tells me, "If you want to receive, man, you just got to keep giving things away." He's like, "You got, you got to donate money. You got to donate your stuff. Just get rid of things, get rid of things." And it comes back because it's, then you're giving it back. Then you give it away again. So it's an interesting process. How would you say that your origin story, as well as the work that you do on a daily basis as a compliance officer, how do those elements factor into and inform the way you lead as a board member? Your philosophy, your approach to meetings, your approach to the community? How, how does that inform your work on the board?
I, I believe that one of the areas, one of my strengths is my ability to lead and, and provide guidance without being overbearing. And that's one of the areas that I have applied as a parent in my work life, and I think, I hope, that it's something that I've brought to the board. An individual who can help guide and provide guidance and a voice for everyone in the community. I remember early on, when I was first coming onto the board, somebody said to me, "Oh, you'll be, you'll be representing the Latino group at the school." And I corrected them and said, "I'm representing every family at Albert Einstein Academy, not just one constituency, but everyone. I understand those families who are like, like mine and who have a similar history as mine, but I'm here to represent all families, and I hope I've done a good job."
Well, you know, it's a testament to the job you've done that Einstein has grown and flourished and been able to do innovative things on behalf of all, of all students. And I think often about the difference between elected board members, and you know, there are lots of great elected board members, some of whom have come on this show, but it's a different thing when you're a politician and you've been elected, elected by a constituency that may live in a certain area or has certain interests. And on a grand scale, a few episodes ago, I spoke with Eric Primack, one of the authors of the California Charter Law, and we spoke about the California Legislature and how it's changed in his 30 years of observing the legislature. And he said that money drives so much of where we are today, that party affiliation is tied to certain moneyed interests, and you really can't depart from that. So everybody has a constituency, and they all remind you of it every day. And so the beauty of this type of an arrangement is that you can say genuinely, "I represent all families, just because I come from this background or that background." It's interesting. No one would have said to a white board member, "So you're, you're representing the white people." Because at the time, five out, probably six out of seven were white, so that would, you know, no one wanted to bring that up. So it's an interesting reflection.
No, and, and you bring up an interesting point. I am an elected official for the other charter school that I'm at. I'm at Steel Canyon High School, and it's also a charter school. And I've been through two elections with Steel Canyon. The first was in 2019, I believe, and the second was just recently, this past fall. And I have to say that political changes over the past few years really have affected school boards, and it was a very different process from the first time I was elected to the second time.
What are you most proud of in your almost two decades of service as an Einstein board member? What, what, what are you most proud of as a legacy that you've been part of leaving for- What, what, what are you most proud of as a legacy that you've been part of leaving for society?
That's a great question. And I've never really thought of it. I've always considered Einstein as such a wonderful community that I'm just proud to be a part of. And they provided such a great community for both of my kids. Both of them went to Einstein K through eight. That this is just my way of being able to give back a little bit to the community that was so wonderful to my kids.
You talked about changes in society and polarization. And I think, you know, this morning I was just watching C-SPAN because it's the only place I can go to not have commentary, but I'm, I'm a political junkie. And even on C-SPAN, they have, there's a show where there's a Republican line. There's a Democrat line and there's an independent line. And you can just predict, uh, and they go from one or the other. You can, the host doesn't say anything, you just, people call in and it's just predictable, predictable narratives. Everyone's in their own channel. Um, there's not a lot of crossover, there's no giving credit to other groups, even if maybe you don't agree, but you think they at least have some logic there. How do you contrast that with the role of disagreement on a board? Healthy disagreement that is part of a dialogue and a negotiation. Um, and a, a real, um, Petri dish of healthy ideas.
I, I, I think that one of the reasons why we are such a good functioning board is that we have, we truly have mutual respect for each other. And we can have conversations and we could, we can have discussions. We may not always agree on all aspects of the discussion. But we respect each other. And once we come to a consensus, we're behind at one hundred percent. So as a board, we understand the importance of leading by example and standing behind the decision that was made at the board level to benefit the community overall.
I think there's a maturity that comes in talking through a, a matter and getting to the point where we can say, well, I'm eighty percent there in supporting that. And my eighty percent is enough for me to be a hundred percent in, in my dealings with the community. So that there's not backstabbing, there's not, um, you know, ro- eye rolling in public or in private, that it's really a unified approach as we continue to move forward.
Absolutely.
What is one of the biggest mistakes that you see boards making? And you don't need to mention names, but. Uh, and cause, because honestly, we've probably made some of them too, right? It's just, it's all a growth and learning process. One of the, what do you think's the, the biggest mistake that a board can make in a nonprofit organization such as a charter school?
Not understanding their role. That, there's a very specific role that the board has. Our role is not to be in the classroom trying to provide guidance to the administration on a day-to-day basis. We have a bigger fiduciary responsibility for the organization. We want to make sure that twenty years from now, we've left a good organization that can continue to thrive in the future. Uh, so really understanding our role and, um, why we're here. It, it's not about us, it's about the organization and ensuring that we have, um, a great place for our kids.
Sounds simple, very hard to implement, right? We know, we've, we've been through, through that. And I can say, you know, I, in meeting a lot of other superintendents and executive directors and obviously having lived in this now for a long time. That's one of the challenges that staff leadership have in many, many, many charter organizations. And actually, school districts as well. You can imagine a small town school district where everyone knows everyone else. It's hard for school board members to resist that thing of going, you know what? It'd be great if, if you would hire so-and-so, you know, at the district. And I can say that we've reached a really good place at Einstein where that's not the case. The challenge, I think, also is that the community often does not understand what a board does and doesn't do. So the implication is, and it got kind of blurred during COVID because so many boards ultimately were the ones as the fiduciary and legal entities, they were saying, we're either gonna open or we're not gonna open. So then it turned into this thing after COVID where, well, you know, the color of the uniforms is just gonna change. Let's go to the board, well, this, that. And so that's a really nuanced idea to understand, right? The role of board members and the fact that board members really supervise one person, one entity, but that they also shouldn't be doing a lot of work.
No. Understanding our role, I think, is, is really, really important. And, and you're right, we, we need to ensure that the community as a whole understands what the role of the board is. Um, and, and you can see dysfunctional boards, uh, when those lines are blurred, uh, that's when you have problems and, and when they don't understand what the role is. And this happens at all levels. This happens at, um, other corporations and nonprofits. Um, I, I've been through several trainings, uh, on dysfunctional boards and why this happens. So really understanding your role is critical.
I always come back to, I wear this pendant around my neck for my own benefit that says ego is the enemy. And ego's, ego can be powerful and productive, but it can also be really destructive. I think there's a, something they, in the charter world, we always talk about the founder syndrome, right? You'll often have one or two strong personalities and people who found a charter school. And sometimes they'll end up on a board. And the hard part there is that they'll be constantly kind of having their hand back down in operations. And I've seen cases, I'm not gonna call out which school districts they are, but I've seen cases of school board members resigning and then interviewing and being hired in the school district in leadership roles. And I think, wow, that's a tricky transition to pull off. And vice versa too. You know, those just completely different hats, really important and they're, they're related to each other, but the role is very different.
It, it is very different and understanding those roles and making sure that those lines aren't blurred is really important.
And the difference between strategic thinking at a governance level and then actual implementation at the staff level, at the granular level.
And I can honestly say that I'm really proud of this organization in how it grew. Um, it was, it grew from what we used to joke about it being a mom and pop to a really strong leader in the charter world. Um, it, it, it's an organization that we can all be proud to be a part of.
It's, you mentioned mom and pop and I've never said this publicly, so I'm gonna say this, that two, two things that flash for me when you say mom and pop. One is that, I, so I joined Einstein, uh, let's see, about four years in, three and a half, four years after it had been founded. So I was hired to start the middle school, as you know. And I remember that, two things, the website had the Einstein logo on it, but it was a photograph of a physical decal or a patch, the kind you would iron onto a shirt.
Yes.
So we were at the stage where it was a photo and you could, if you zoomed in, you could see the shadow around it. And I thought, wow, we weren't even at the graphic stage. Uh, but the other thing is, little known fact, my first two paychecks at Einstein bounced.
Yikes.
So that's how small the organization was. You know, I remember I was all excited, I, you know, I'd left an organization, joined Einstein all excited. And I remember I, I, I deposited my first paycheck and it bounced. And then somehow we, they, the organization patched it over and made it go. And we're not talking about massive paychecks either. It was really a function of the fact that it operationally, either there wasn't money in the account or someone didn't transfer it and, and, uh.
All I can say is we've grown.
We've grown, I think, when I, when I think we're at a hundred and sixty-five staff members. And so, yeah, we can't be bouncing paychecks anymore and luckily.
Thankfully, we're, we're no longer.
We're never, we're never, I was thinking there's gonna be like a run on employees, people just. I remember saying at the time to some friends, you think I should, should I be looking elsewhere? And then like, stick it out for a year. And it's been the, the best and greatest professional journey and learning process of, of my life. Where do you hope that charter schools will be in another thirty years? I mean, they're about thirty years old, a little bit over. Where do you hope they are in another thirty years in California?
I would love for them to continue to grow and flourish. Uh, my, both my kids went to Einstein K through eight. Um, my oldest went to, uh, a U- a San Diego Unified School District High School. Uh, my youngest is currently at another charter school. And I think it helped develop them into who they are. They're strong, independent, confident, young women, um, that I can't stop raving about. Uh, anyone who speaks with me for more than five minutes will get an earful of everything that Genevieve and Gabrielle are doing in their lives. And I'm so incredibly proud of them, but I really do feel that, uh, what they, the education they received at a charter school as opposed to your standard down the street district school helps shape who they are. And so thirty years from now, I would hope that the charter movement continues to flourish and grow so that more families have this level of experience. Where we really felt proud to be here. It felt like we were at a, at a fancy private school, even though it was your public charter school down the street. It lo- it provides and affords a level of education that a lot of families can't get unless their kids attend a fancy private school.
I think that's the beauty of customization and really designing around a mission and a vision. But then also the equity piece, which is that it's open to everybody.
Yes.
You, you live within the state of California and you go, you apply by the certain deadline. You're in unless we have more people wanting to get in than we have spots, in which case there's a blind public lottery. And that's for me, the greatest gift of this. And I've, I attended private school, uh, kin- uh, probably preschool twelve, and then I went to a private college. And then for my graduate work, I, I went public. But my whole career's been in publicly funded educational institutions. And the beautiful gift that that can be in a country where it's compulsory. And so we need to live up to the promise of that, which is that all students should have access to that feeling of something special, right? Rather than settling. And I know you were born in Tijuana, you know, looking at schools in Mexico. And I have a lot of Mexican friends who will tell me this, that, you know, anybody and everybody who can escapes the public schools and goes to a private school.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we don't have that here. Yeah, there's a percentage of folks who are always gonna go to public schools, but the financial barrier in San Diego in an expensive ci- even in, in a city where average, uh, family income is over a hundred thousand dollars. You're talking about forty, fifty thousand dollar annual tuitions for someone in elementary, middle and high. And so that's just not within the reach of most people. So that gift, I know you and I have talked about this, that the Einstein journey around equity has been somewhat, has had some twists and turns from the early days in terms of being able to understand a changing demographic of our students. That's increased in terms of what percentage of our students are free and reduced lunch. Even the ethnic makeup linguistically, et cetera, of our population. Um, just to be able to reflect on that, look back. I've really admired your leadership as we've continued to navigate that, right? It's one thing if you keep twenty-seven kids of, who are all one race in a, have them in a, in a church basement in, in a program. We know that's not sustainable. So now from that to where we are with fifteen hundred and soon to be over two thousand, very diverse. What have been some challenges along the way for you personally and as a board member as we've navigated this? Cause you've really been, you're the most, you're the longest serving board member we have and the person with the longest tenure in the organization. What has been your journey on the equity piece?
Well, first I have to say that I'm incredibly proud that the board now reflects more closely what our community looks like. Um, we have, uh, a very diverse board. Uh, with really capable individuals on there. I'm so incredibly proud to serve with everybody on the board. Um, there have been challenges over the years when it comes to our community and where we've ended up from that little schoolhouse on College Avenue to where we are today. Um, there were some uncomfortable discussions about where we were moving to and the neighborhood that we were moving to. Um, I remember those days and really trying to work through that concept with our community and letting them know that this was a good move for, for our kids and for the organization. And that everything was going to be okay. Um, and I, although it was challenging, I honestly do not regret any of the steps we made along the way. I think that they have allowed for us to flourish in a way that we may not have been able to at a different location.
At a different location and serving perhaps a different student and family profile. And the irony for me is that the neighborhood surrounding the original Einstein, which at the time, the perception was it was safer and socio-economically somehow uh, you know, a better, uh, uh, in quotations, I use the word better. And we moved to an area where now the homes are millions of dollars and no one can afford to live there.
Yes, and i- it is interesting that, um, there was this perception that we were moving to a place that was not as good as where we were. And in every aspect of that move was perfect for the organization.
It was perfect. I, I have just a couple more questions for you and I really appreciate your time this morning. I know you're busy and you're gonna run off and do more chief compliance officer duties. But I wanted to ask you, thinking about the, the next generation of board members and folks in communities who want to serve. What advice would you give someone who is interested in getting involved in serving on a charter school board? Because we have flurries of interest whenever there are openings. But my perspective on that is that folks come with a bunch of different, ang- from a du- bunch of different angles and each with their own agenda often. So what kind of guidance would you give people in terms of the optimum outcome for someone getting on a board?
I would say not to forget why we're here. And it's for, um, for the kids that we're serving and the families that we're serving. And again, it goes back to my early days on the board where I was asked, am I here to represent one specific demographic? And we're not. Whatever that demographic may be that you're thinking about, you're here to serve all the kids in the organization. Um, so really taking a step back and thinking of why you want to participate in the functioning of the board. Is it something for yourself? Or is it something that is, uh, for the, for someone else? I don't think that I've been on the board at any point, I, I don't know if we'll keep this or not. Um, I've never looked at it as self-serving. It's always been, what can I provide to the organization, to the? It's always been, what can I provide to the organization, to the community, to the kids that we're serving? And it's never been about myself. And so really understanding why you want to serve on the board. Um, and what you can bring to the organization as opposed to what can I get for myself or my kid or um, uh, again, being able to serve.
Right, or as opposed to what's one discreet thing that I'm obsessed with changing in the organization? And if I could just get on the board, I would change that. Right, we see that a lot. So I, I really appreciate that message and hopefully that will help inform our community. You know, the next time we have openings on our board. Who are your role models? What, what really inspires you to keep this, keep this going? You are one of the busiest people I know and so I'm privileged to have you here for an hour today, but um, who are your role models?
Oh, this. This is easy, I think, um, my parents, uh, so incredibly hardworking. Um, uh, my, my mom was always a stay-at-home mom because that's what my dad wanted. And so she ensured that we had breakfast, lunch and dinner that was homemade. Um, she made sure that we were at school on time, always looking our best. And uh, no matter uh, our economic situation, you could never tell what that was because she took pride in her family. My dad always worked so many jobs. Um, just working hard, trying to provide for his family. And he really provided that sense of working hard. I think that that's where, that's where I get it, that's where Genevieve, who is 25 years old. Uh, she works for uh, the Cancer Center at UCLA. Um, she also works as a server in uh, at a restaurant in East County. And she works for the San Diego Padres as their newest ball girl.
Keep an eye out, right field line on certain nights, right?
She'll be, she'll be Cinco de Mayo tonight, she'll be at right field. Um, so there's always this sense of, of working hard and just doing your best. Um, and I, I, I think that my parents instilled that um, love of family and working hard. And one of the things that struck me a few years ago that my sister said to me was uh, about my family is that Sean, my husband, Genevieve, Gabrielle and I are so incredibly tight as a family unit that we don't ever let anyone in. And I've thought about that a lot and we just enjoy each other's company. And I think that we, that was instilled on a, into us from my parents. And so um, it's just amazing. Uh, my dad's now retired and um, in his retirement age, uh, my parents travel a lot. So they, they spend their time traveling and about a year and a half ago, my dad started um, uh, competing in triathlons. And in his first year um, as an athlete, a triathlon athlete. He um, was able to reach the podium three times, which allowed him to um, gain a, a berth to the International Triathlon in Montreal, Canada last year. As well as uh, he also earned a berth to the National Triathlon in uh, Milwaukee last year, or actually Miss- Detroit, Michigan, sorry, um, Detroit, Michigan.
Sounds like cold water.
It was really cold, he did not like it.
Both of those, right? Montreal can't be that balmy either.
No, he did not enjoy the water in Montreal, he says that he would rather not do that, he'd rather stick to.
What happened to Hawaii? Isn't it, aren't they still doing the Ironman there?
Well, that's interesting, uh, my dad just turned 69, um, he did have a, a, a medical scare recently where he um, suffered a massive stroke in um, February of this year. Um, but again, my inspiration, my hero. Um, thankfully, he uh, recovered really well and within a month of having had that massive stroke was already back uh, training, uh, he ran a 5K and then a 10K. A couple of weeks ago, he did uh, another 10K. He is um, running a triathlon, or he's competing in a triathlon Sunday, this Sunday, May 7th, I believe. Um, and he's training for the Ironman, that he would like to complete an Ironman before he turns 70.
Wow, I just got really tired thinking about all that. That's, that's really inspirational, hopefully he gets, hopefully your whole family gets a chance to listen to this so they, they know how, how important they are to you. I'm, I'm sure they already know, but it's always nice to hear it from your kid, right? Um, okay, here's your final
Okay.
question.
I'm ready.
And so Maria Ortega gets a chance to design a billboard on the side of the 5 freeway. And thinking about people driving by at 65 or 70 miles an hour, they only have two or three seconds to really absorb the message and remember it. What does your custom billboard communicate about your philosophy of life? You told us your origin story, which is really inspirational and you mentioned that you've come really far for someone from your, the background, you, you come, you've come really far from someone from any background, I'm just gonna say that. But what is your philosophy on life billboard that I get to see as I drive by?
God, that's, that is a difficult question. Because you only have a few seconds.
Yeah, and you know, people cheat on this one when I ask them, they go, could I have like two or three billboards? So it's more metaphorical, but what really is thinking about your uh, philosophy on life, right? What, what you communicate, what's your north star in terms of your communication? You know, I'm sure as a parent, you know, we, we reserve, we return to the same themes and, and probably at work you do as well. So what's your philosophy on life?
It's, it's really, and, and I think I can say this and I was reflecting on this earlier today. Um, I always get a sense of, I'm not doing enough. I feel like I'm not doing enough and it wasn't in, in anticipation of this interview. Because frankly, I forgot about it this morning. And so I looked at my calendar for my day, to see what my day was like. Um, so it's a sense of being able to do more. And I, I was thinking about it this morning and I thought to myself, have I done enough in my life? What else can I do to give back? And I have my youngest who's going away to college, I'll be dropping her off. We will, all four of us will be uh, traveling together to South Dakota to drop her off and.
It'll still be warm.
It will still be warm, I sh- uh, Gabrielle and I actually went in October and it was very warm, it was almost 80 degrees. Um, but I started to reflect on, on my life and what else I could do. Because I will have some free time, I won't be um, involved in all of Gabrielle's activities. Um, Sean and I will be empty nesters come August, which will be a huge change. Um, and just thinking of, of what else I could do, because it doesn't feel like it's enough. I just wanna continue to give back in some capacity or another. So just trying to figure out how else I can become a productive member of society. I think we've done a great job with our kids. Um, because we've raised two incredible human beings.
Yeah, I can attest to that.
And if I can help.
I'm still waiting for my Tatis signed baseball.
From Genevieve.
Genevieve, uh, right field, you're close to Tatis, but uh, it's okay if you can't get it.
So I, I, I think that that's what, so not bad from a little brown girl from TJ. What I've done.
Right.
But I'm not done.
Yeah, I'm not done, that might be it right there, I'm not done. Yeah, thank you Maria so much, that's a really appropriate place, I think, to end, cause we're not done. I'd love to have you back at a future time when it fits into your busy schedule. It's been an absolute pleasure and an honor to sit down with you today and talk about and hear about your past and your present and your goals for the future and also just be inspired by, by your journey. So thank you so much for your time. Thank you for listening to the Superintendent's Hangout. You can follow me on Twitter at DVS1970. Please be sure to share this show with friends and family on social media and in the real world. Thank you to Brad Bakayal for editing and production assistance. And to Tina Royster for scheduling and logistics. Thanks for hanging out and have a great day.